Okay, I'd like to call our meeting to order. Everybody can sit down. We can get started.
Yeah.
So that I was getting. Tidoki, we're all starting now.
Sorry, you were meeting.
We're making the call. You're here. All of us to order.
Okay. Why don't I call?
Okay, so I'd like to call it to order. This regular meeting of the CDU School Board, February 17th. We'll start with adjustments to the agenda. Do you have any? Moving on to audience and communications. Do we have anybody in the audience who wants to speak?
Whoever holds the speech.
I'd like to take this minute to acknowledge your retirement. Jonathan has been on the board for nine years.
Woo!
It's a long time. I'm not sure how many of those years you've served as clerk.
Eight of them.
Eight of them?
Nine.
Pull them in right away.
Six. Probably six.
I defer to Jones. Six?
I think six.
Okay.
And done in a very thorough dress.
Yes. Jonathan's been invaluable, I mean, in the three years that I've been here, been a valuable person over helping to oversee our finances, helping us move forward with our field problem and serving so ably as our clerk. So I just wanted to take this minute to thank you for those nine years of service. And we have a little, I wish I could be as funny as Jean Esma. She's doing her retirements, but we have a little gift here for you.
Thank you.
We'd like to give it. So thank you, Jonathan.
Well, while we're on that subject, I have another retirement that I've been tasked with acknowledging, which is, as we know, Susan is retiring at the end of her term.
You already did this.
I know, but this is, that was just the CSU board. We could do this one. Three years, that's all?
That's all.
I mean, you made such a big impact, Susan, and we all really appreciate the fact that you stood up and took a leadership role and, not just being board chair, which is a lot of work, but also in all the committees and the communication, it's really been phenomenal. And we're going to have a big hole when you leave, and we're definitely going to miss you. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
And I have a gift, but it's not as funny as the last one.
Thank you. Okay, well, moving right on to item four, presentations. So as Jean reminded, the CSSU board, this year has been a year about student support services, and that was the focus of our Common Topic presentation, which was on the universal pre-K law and what CSSCA was doing around early childhood education. Tonight, we're going to hear from Jeff about what's happening at the high school level around prevention.
Yep. So if you remember, last time, we spoke about some alternative programs, the life program, and fundamentals, and essentials. And tonight, we want to focus on Student Assistance Program and Prevention Committee, which is a relatively new committee. And the person who is right in the middle of both is our SAP, Tim Travethic. So he is going to speak to us tonight. He is our SAP and the co-chair of the Prevention Committee. So, Tim, you're on, and I'll pass these out. He brought along a little quick summary. You can just pass it down, Jean. Thank you. I think that's enough.
Is it on?
I was going to ask where our students are. Oh, yeah, Lorna is sick tonight, and.
How's it working?
Hi, Lucy.
It was working.
Lisa is sick.
Did I screw it up?
And Polly's in Florida. So much.
That is convenient. I have a thing you know I can start.
Is it this that we could just jump over? Oh, no.
It looks like it's on.
It's on, I just got it, it's muted right now.
Oh, it's muted? Is there a button here if we get on the chair?
It's like. I think without a, it's bad.
Hey, try to work this conflict, don't come up on that chair.
Who's climbing? So what do you think, what's the, what are we looking at here?
Hello?
He's just working a video.
I think it's open.
Yep.
You go back and forth.
Yeah. Ah, there we go. It's like kicking a TV in the old days.
Nice job, Jeff.
Still got it.
Thanks. I've gone over solution hard this night.
So, good evening, I'm Tim Travethic, the SAP counselor at CDU. This is my fifth year here. Things changed a little bit since I first got hired back in 2010. And when I got hired, I was, I was hired full-time, and we also had a .6 FTE, Prevention Coordinator. And that actually, the loss of that Prevention Coordinator has had an impact in terms of what I do. Because my sole, my sole responsibility at that point were to really identify, work individually with students. And now, I tend to do that and a little bit of other things. So, when we talk about prevention, SAP is just one part of it, right? We're talking about multifaceted, multifaceted approach. And it needs to be between the school, home, and the broader community. And it has to. In my, this is my 10th year as an SAP, I was four years at another high school, another year at elementary school. And what we're truly trying to do is change culture. I first walked in here and I had a conversation with administrator, and I got to tell you that that conversation really annoyed me. And because the conversation essentially said, "It is what it is, and that's unacceptable." That was unacceptable, that, her response was unacceptable to me. And that's why I've had probably multiple conversations after that with administrators. And my engagement in terms of what we do as a community, as a school, got even more in depth. And when I say that, I broached out in front of the individuals, just meeting with individuals and meeting that top 10 percent. And when I mean top 10 percent, most of my work is, if I have a bell curve, right? The top 10 percent of my work I'm doing with individuals are people who need treatment already. So, if you understand, this 10 percent will never mean any support. And then you have all the people in the middle. This doesn't work. The current system doesn't work in terms of we're reacting, reacting, reacting. You know, it's the shuffling up approach. If we were more proactive, we're changing the culture, we have more of a culture in terms of positivity, we're celebrating the wonderful individuals who are making the healthy choices. So let's be honest, majority of our students are making healthy choices. And we'll talk about trends, we'll talk about data. But it's so easy to get caught up in negative, but that's the way we've always been doing things. So the SAP has been at CDU since 1995. And I would say that I'm extremely qualified for my job, because remember, in 95, I sat in the SAP office here in this building. So, what I want to change, in particular, is the no-use norm. And that needs to be not only in the school, but it also needs to be at home, which is a really tough thing for us to do, because we only have students for seven hours of the day, and it's tough to tell how a parent should parent. Right? But this needs, this is number one, is no use. And we need to get that reinforced at home, and it needs reinforced by adults. Unfortunately, it doesn't happen. So, what we're trying to do now is, when I brought into, it was about three years ago, in response, again, to a situation, Mr. McManon came to me and said, "What do you think about this?" And I think there was some frustration around our policy. So we had an ad hoc committee start, I broached a couple of teachers and personnel, and saying, "Can we look together at this?" And so that ad hoc committee was really looking at our substance abuse policy and saying, "Can we do better?" We looked at research in terms of repaired injustice. I've reached out to a number of people, repaired wars in our town. So I remember Shep and I actually visited with Shelber, and I was a bit annoyed because they said, "Hey, Tim and Shep, we're seeing a lot of CDU students getting pulled over for things." And I said, "Yeah, that makes sense, because they live in our communities." Which, you know, I talked to Jeff about this a lot, when I first got my job, again, I'm going a little tangential, I was annoyed because people would come up to me and say, "Hey, I heard CDU's got a drug problem." But I say, "We have a community problem." Because if you don't take, if we take the drugs and alcohol of our communities, we'll take it out of school. Because we're here in school, we're not growing marijuana in our school. The teachers are, at least. I don't think Gitlin is teaching, like, growing marijuana in buckney five. You know, I don't think we're brewing alcohol in our school. So I was really, really annoyed when I first got hired, because this is a community problem. This is a state problem. So thou, when I look at it, I'm a big systems guy, so how do we, how do we tackle this? How do we go about in trying to create change? So, our goal, my goal is at the, this, is to reduce rates of substance use. But this is bigger than substance use, this is prevention holistically, because substance use, right, to me is a sign of other indicators. What are you doing with substance use, right? People experiment, but after the first time, it goes from experimenting to use. Let's be honest. So I believe in more of a co-occurring thing that helps, that happens. And stress, anxiety, depression, other social stuff, family stuff. So my big thing is to reduce substance use. My big thing is also to support students, whether it's tardiness, you know, other things that are happening in our school with our students. So you guys have seen this, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, this is part of the CSSU prevention framework that I was a part of. What I want to talk about is my job and the CDU Prevention Committee that has evolved, okay? This is a snapshot of last year. I saw 238 students individually, and 211 were referred out. Part of my job is to do brief intervention, crisis work, screen. I refer out as much as I can, one is because I'm told to, second is because I want to see more and more students. I am not a school-based clinician where I have a caseload, my caseload is 1,360. So, that is different. When I worked at Spectrum, Youth and Family Services, I was supposed to be billing, and I supposed to, I need to do this, this, and this, and carry concern caseload. I don't have that here. So, most common issues faced, and this is where I was talking about the co-occurring, is substance use, stress, anxiety, depression, concern with families, substances, relationships, and peers. All these are interconnected. All of them are interconnected. So when a student comes to me, and thankfully, and I take a compliment to this, a lot of my referrals are self-referrals, and they say, "I can't stop smoking pot. I can't stop smoking pot. I need help." I said, "Okay, let's talk about it," you know? And we start all the way back in terms of where, where they started. And then I get a fuller picture of context in terms of what is going on with this young person's life. What is happening at home, what is happening at school, all the other factors that may contribute to his ongoing substance use. And a lot of that part is stress, anxiety, depression. And unfortunately, I'm seeing way too many students who are struggling with their parents' use. And that's the sad thing, because I don't have a lot of control over that. Another relationship here, which is always.
Did you say struggling with their parents' use?
Parents' use, substance use, alcohol or drug use. Yep. And I'm saying more of that. I've actually created another category in my list of parents' issues, whether they're mental health or substances.
So use versus abuse?
Substance.
Or any substance use?
Any substance. I typically only put it down when it's substance abuse. When a student tells me it's problematic, usually it's problematic, because kids don't really talk about their parents' use. Do you know what I mean by that?
Yeah, I do know what you mean by that. And then, and do you have any sense of the relative proportion between alcohol, abuse, and other drugs?
Alcohol is by far, I mean, it's a legal substance.
In the adult?
Yes.
In, in, okay.
Yeah, we'll talk about students, but certainly for adults. I mean, there's certain drugs that kids won't even share. They'll share about mom or dad's heroin use and opiate use, but they won't talk about, for some reason, this weird thing about cocaine, but it's mostly alcohol, which makes sense. It's a legal substance. So, so this is just a small snapshot of the individual work that I do with students. So, brief intervention, assessment, staff training. I've been trying to do more education with staff, it's difficult to do because we're so busy, faculty meetings is tough. I try to reach out to staff and do trainings in services, especially special educators, because I see them more proportionate with special education. Again, my, I'm trying to reduce rates, risk of harm, and to decrease behavior. So, this is what I was talking about, and I'm really proud of our prevention committee, because I don't think we've, anywhere in the state, they've actually had a unified strategic plan. And that is, like, and I've talked to Christine Lloyd-Lu Barry, who was the co-chair, and I've talked to other people in the state, I don't think they've been given the opportunity to do what we've done. And part of that is support from our administration, who's been extremely supportive, even McManon was extremely supportive, but to do a school-wide strategic preventive plan is huge. So as I said, we had our ad hoc committee, we evolved and stopped talking about research around policy to, "How can we be proactive? How can we change culture?" And part of that is also, Jeff is getting undated by outside resources, saying, "Can we come in the building? Can we come in the building? Can we do this?" So, this group, which started out with essentially school personnel, expanded to community members, parent, and also Christine. And I got to say, the community member was a huge addition. This parent was a huge addition to our board, because that perspective allowed me, and also students, we had two students on our committee. It was great. Especially the students as well, because one of them, I know particularly in my role, that may or may not choose to use. And that has an influence to say, when I say, "How do we reach kids? How do we make change, effective change?" And this person being open and honest actually allows us to do that in a more thoughtful way. So, we were tasked essentially to research, evaluate these programs that Jeff was, we're soliciting to Jeff, and we created that, or we looked at those, and then we said, "Okay, but what really works?" And we looked at evidence-based stuff, and I can send you links to evidence-based programs through SAMSHA, and we looked at those. The most effective that I have known to see in terms of prevention program is the Truth Campaign. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the Truth Campaign? It was a big tobacco one. And we looked at that, and that's a, that's a broader one, and so we tried to slim it down. And one of our teachers, and I think he spoke to you guys maybe a month ago, Mr. Jednick, was a big about conversations, having conversations with kids. He said, "What about using our advisory?" So we came up with our advisory campaign, and we came up with three goals, and we talked about three smart goals. Our texting and driving, it's a very scary thing, is we want to reduce it by no more, no less than five points from 2013, or WRBS stated 2017. As you're going to see later, 52 percent of our seniors reported texting and driving. And we all, let's be honest, all of us adults have done it one point. I'm just putting it out there.
Or 52 percent of the time.
So, so we, that's the first one to address that. And then our second one, and this is a scary thing, is that drug driving has now surpassed drinking and driving. In 2008, nationally, it surpassed. In Vermont, it has now surpassed as well. Drug driving, the number one in terms of drugs being found is cannabis. So, we are tackling drinking and driving when someone's either smoked or previously drank before. So we're going to try to tackle that. And then also, we're trying to tackle our binge drinking, which overall, all these things are going down, except for the, anything relating to marijuana, which is good. So, we looked at these, these are our three smart goals. The interesting, the interesting one was marijuana. And that became a larger conversation, because first, we had to tackle the misconceptions around marijuana, period. So we talked about driving, because most of the students would probably think that I'm okay to drive, I'm a better driver, because I drive slow, but that's not true. So we got to go all the way back and say, "Okay, let's talk about marijuana first." And then, and then talk about drug driving in that conversation. So what is the advisory campaign? It is essentially helping our faculty who have an advisor, and it's a cool thing, because it's one adult for 12 kids in a safe environment. And that allows for conversations, open conversations. So we create a script for the teachers, especially some teachers don't feel comfortable having uncomfortable conversations. And we give them data points, and we give them questions to ask. So essentially, they have everything in front of them to facilitate a conversation. Their job is to create the boundaries, to pop in the questions and data, and then let the dialogue happen. "Wait, wait, wait, so that's not true. Everyone thinks everyone in CDU smokes pot." Like, I was in a classroom today with Scott Bliss and the freshmen, and I always ask, "How many people you think smoke pot at CDU?" And, you know, all their kids, all the kids raise their hand. Then I say, "Well, that's not true. Let's talk about that." So we always have to go after the misconceptions. And the reality is, again, as I said, majority of the kids are making healthy choices. So, this is the advisory campaign, and this is one part of the recommendation that we proposed, the CDU Prevention Committee proposed to Jeff and leadership. The other ones were other campaigns, like the Above the Influence campaign, and I just had a conversation with Christine, and we spent a lot of time on this and trying to get it right, that we need to work on other things as well. But I just want to give you a snapshot in terms of what this looks like and what we do with it. I'm pretty proud of it, and I'm really proud of our prevention committee. It's tough, because it's a lot of work that I don't always have time to do. So, WRBS, I think you guys are all familiar with the WRBS? Yes, no? It is a youth risk behavior survey, started taking back in 95. What, to me, the trend, if you look at 95 to now, we know that prevention works, and it's awesome. And I can tell you, because I graduated in 96, and that was a different, that was a spike in the WRBS, okay? And it's gone down ever since. So, let's talk about trends. As you can see, and it's wonderful to see, look at the trends from 2001, right? Overall, we're seeing really good drops. Education is working, prevention is working, people are understanding that there's some risks. I don't know if, do you guys want me to spend time on this, think about it, talk about it? I'm pretty proud, because I came in right here, and there's big gaps to drop, so I just want to put that in.
Could we get a copy of this?
We can get your, we can, I can send you the link to this.
Yeah.
Tomorrow.
I can send all of you, for sure. So, overall, alcohol use has gone down, which is great. And when I'm talking about, this is total percent of all students. I didn't break out by grade. And remember, this is, but I got to be careful. So 66, 66 percent in 2001. So let's put a number to that. So if we're talking about 1,300 students, we're talking about 600 students roughly, right? That's a lot. Still, 53 percent is half. So, if we had 1,360 kids, half are still active suing alcohol ever, and that's unraised rate here.
And it's all four years, right? I mean, that, if that number.
Yeah, exactly.
That was just seniors, I would say.
That's what I mean, right?
Yeah.
Right? But I, so I wanted to play that out.
Yeah.
And that's a different, so here, here's the marijuana. Marijuana's a little bit more interesting. We've seen the decrease, for sure, but it's very slight, except for here, starting to go up. And I anticipate, and anecdotally, that it will be going up again this year. That's all anecdotally, I want to be wrong. We'll be doing, administering our WRBS on March 11th, on Wednesday. So I tease this out a little bit by grades. So, closer look at marijuana, this is from 2011 to 13, you can see rates have gone up. Ninth and 10th, and 12th. For whatever reason, last 2013, those juniors, it went down. This is a bit scary to me. This is freshmen in the past 30 days. So overall, we're seeing an increase in marijuana use, and we'll see that continue because of several reasons. One is, there's a lot of mixed messages out there. Period. From adults. Whether it's legalization, whether it's medical marijuana. I mean, we had a young lady make some really poor choices in school, and her comment to the administrator said, "What's the big deal? It's going to be legal soon." So we, as adults, do a really poor job, not to say just us, but I'm talking to a large community, of our messages to students and to our adolescents. So, I'm sad to say, but our rates will probably continue to go up. Should, yes, sir?
In states where it has been legalized, do you have any sense of what it's going to be if it gets legalized?
So Denver alone, there was a, there was a thing that I got sent. It was really scary at first. It said it went up 350 percent. Or, no, let me take that back, did not increase, because I want to be clear. That use is higher, 350 percent higher than the national average. So I look back, right? And national average is 6 percent for eighth-grade use. I look back at ours, CSSU, eighth grade, it's 5 percent. Great. So when I really looked at it, and I talked to John Searls, a research analyst at ADAP, State of Vermont, he said, "Well, if you really look at it, it's not 350 percent, but their rates are about 22 percent." So national average is 6, Denver's is 22 percent. If that says something.
Was it 22 percent?
Yes.
To begin with?
No. It was, it was lower than that. It has increased tremendously. So, and you got to remember that legalization in Colorado actually occurred in 2013, the sale happened in January 1 of '14. So it's banned legal for two years.
Well, it puts it into the realm of alcohol, right?
What's that?
That if the legalized pot is going to be, it's legal for adults, you have to have the same kind of messaging why it's not legal for 13-year-olds.
Right.
Or even 18-year-olds.
Oh, no doubt. And I don't want, you know, I'm looking at Jeff, because I can go a long time.
About to tell you to go to the next slide.
I can go a long.
We've had this discussion many times.
Because this is going to impact my world more than you know. It's going to impact our world, because, for example, when edibles get here in larger amounts, which we're just discovering they are now, and I shared that with Jeff, it's going to completely change and vaporize. It is going to be really, really tough. So, here's the last one in terms of slides and some data. Here's the driving thing. And this is what I was talking about, drove a car within a smoking, so that's 14 percent. That's smoking marijuana and drinking alcohol, and that's wonderful. 3 percent is not, you know, only, only 3 percent. So that means those who can drive, only 3 percent of the people who can drive are drinking and driving. The problem is, this is continuing to go up, which is smoking marijuana. And rode with someone who's still, or been drinking, I mean, excuse me, rode with a driver who's been smoking is 20 percent, rode with someone who's been drinking is 16 percent. Again, there's that flip. There's a lot of positive things that happen, right? It's always easy to put this out to pay people alert, but overall, we're doing a pretty good job, but we need to do better. And we can do better. Because 35 percent, right, of people who have texted and driving of all students, that's including probably juniors and seniors, maybe a couple sophomores, because freshmen shouldn't be driving, that's a big number who are still texting and driving. You know, about 350 students? So, I don't know if we got time, because I can continue to talk.
We're getting to the end here. One or two more questions. He knew, he knew he was going to have to get pulled off the stage. We've talked about this.
I'm so passionate about this.
Yes, exactly.
This is my, yeah, it's my world.
If you could talk more, I mean, we're running out of time, maybe talk a little bit more about some of the ideas that you have around prevention?
Yes.
I, it needs to be a, now that I'm in it for so long now, and I was part of it as
a student, we need, it comes down to changing culture, period. It really does. And so how do we do that? We need to celebrate the 65 percent who are making the healthy choices. Part of the recommendations is, we talked about showcasing.
Yes, exactly.
This is my, yeah, it's my world. So.
If you could talk more, I mean, we're running out of time. Maybe talk a little bit more about some of the ideas that you have around prevention?
Yes. I, it needs to be a, now that I'm in it for so long now and I, I was part of it as a student. We need, it comes down to changing culture, period. It really does. And so how do we do that? We need to celebrate the 65% who are making the healthy choices. Part of the recommendations is, we talked about showcasing. One of the models is Harvard High School does a really awesome job about showcasing students in multiple ways that they are talented. And we, you know, I talked with Jeff and we've talked to Jeff about that. So we need to continue to, to celebrate. I think there was a huge shift. When I was in high school, it was cool to not do well. And the great thing is when I came back to CBU, CBU is an amazing school and all of a sudden it is really cool to do well. It is awesome and kids celebrate it and they want to do well and they want us to see and have aspirations. So we need to continue to, in every way, in terms of showcasing that. We need to tap into that positive piece and celebrate that as opposed to giving so much attention to the negative. And, you know, in a conversation, I remember when Jeff was still a house director, I was like. And Jeff said, wait, wait, Tim, let's, let's do it this way. And I really appreciate that, that perspective because my world is this. And it's really nice to get Jeff saying, well, let's, let's do it this way. Let's showcase kids, let's celebrate those kids. So how do we do that? The showcase is one example. Part of it also is developing the values. I know that over at South Burlington, they do the Flying Rhyme. And we've discussed that here at CBU. The Flying Rhyme Campaign.
It's about creating core values and a number of other things. And I'll interject that that's gonna be a part of the PLP process. So that kids develop core values and have social goals in the short term, academic goals.
Yep. Because that's, that's part of it. When I, before I got to the prevention committee, I'm big in athletics and myself and someone else sort of discovered and made the ALC, Athletic Leadership Council. And we created that because we have a lot of wonderful student athletes and this has happened with that unfortunate incident with those two gentlemen. Were both student athletes. And this other, my colleague and I said, this is really unfair. That the, the PR is based on this when we have 95% of our student athletes are amazing people who are doing great things. So we created Athletic Leadership Council for, for giving back to our community, but also for me is that I also know in my job that not all student athletes make the right choices. And so I was actually trying to harness the athletic part because they are powerful. They have an impact within our communities. And I remember I got a lot of grief for that, why is Tim spending so much time with student athletes? But I was doing it purposely because these, these kids, these student athletes have an impact in our communities, in our building, and people follow them. And so I was actually trying to make them, or help them rather, be positive influences and models both on and off the field. And so that was another part that I tried to do and I'm still working on that. And, you know, there's growing pains because we had a couple student athletes who we got let go of our ALC because of choices they made. But I think this year, our ALC is phenomenal. That doesn't mean that the 40 kids are 100% making the healthy choices, but I think we're having more and more impact every year. And these kids are representing CBU, their teams in our community in a better way and it shows. So that's another piece that I, that I've been working on. Yes, sir?
I think Jones got a question?
Yeah, Jones.
We should make it the last one, I think.
Just to give this bit of information, Anna Claire Smith, who was a school board rep and is now at Middlebury College, got in touch with me and for her J-term project, the, the January term. She and a small group of students have created an app that will be for, to monitor texting and driving. And she's gonna present to both Senate and House Transportation Committees. And there's a manufacturer who they've been in touch with. So, so some of those positive ideas that, that, and she said, you know, the state came up with punishment. If you text and drive, there's a fine, there's all these things. She said, this app will, will reward on how long you don't touch your phone and, and I don't know the details, but.
Using the positive.
Yes. So it really fits in and she's gonna present next week.
So back to, I can show you recommendations from our prevention committee that says other ideas. Off the top of my head, I don't remember.
I'd love to see that.
Yeah, there's several on there. So.
Anybody else have any questions?
Your last paragraph, need from the board, this is more a question for the board. Is it appropriate, can and should a board member join the CBU Prevention Committee? If you wanted board awareness and board understanding, is that possible? I don't know that if it's possible, that's why I'm asking.
I'm editing what I was about to say.
You shouldn't do that while driving.
That's a good question. Mike, I'll tell you what I was editing. I said, I don't want to slow her down, but you're correct. And I think the support we've had from administration has been awesome. And I know Jeff had to sort of pull me back and say, let's do this process, let's do this process because I'm so gung ho, I just want, I want to do things. So, and I think our process will be great, we've been thoughtful, we've done the research. Would I value a board member? Yes. As long as it's part of the longer, like part of the process. You know what I mean? And I don't want, just like a team, as it used to be in the cross code, an outside person come in and definitely change the dynamics. You know what I mean? So I, I welcome a more of a different conversation, a further conversation about that, especially if you guys are interested. Will I ever say no? No, because probably I can't. But.
I turned on the CY board as a school board rep. So there's, there's connection there, but this is like a.
So it does sound like there's some precedent.
Yeah.
Certainly something we can ask the committee.
Kristine Wood, who is our chair, and she's been huge with the organization piece. Because without Christine, I don't have time to do the other stuff. I, I'm doing other things. So.
We can, we can put it on the agenda, have a discussion about it, within their committee first, if that works for people.
Any other questions? Concerns, comments? Yes?
Because you said prior to you being there, it was a one and .6 position and if that .6 is taken away.
Yes, I was a full-time and a .6 prevention coordinator, yep.
And I'm assuming that was because of funding that was taken away?
I believe so.
And is that, because it looks like your last paragraph also was talking about increasing funding for the program because it relies heavily on 30% on grants. So I wasn't sure if that was something.
I, yeah, I don't know, I, I actually don't know how I get paid. And to be honest, I just do my job. Until someone tells me that your job's in jeopardy, then I'll, I just want to keep doing my job. Would, would I welcome more support? Yes? I know SS High School is actually entertaining the idea of having a second SAP. And they're the second largest high school in the state. I know because they entertained me and said, hey, would you ever come to SS High School? I said, I don't know, it's gotta be really, really, because I like my job.
It would have cut this maybe because of CY funding?
Yeah, CY funding.
Yeah.
Because I don't remember the board making the decision to cut this position.
Yeah, no, it was a CY related issue and we are, we, we did not play a big role in the funding of this, to be honest, right now. Yeah.
Can I answer? Okay. Are you, the question?
Can I make two quick comments?
Yeah.
First of all, as a faculty member, this is really great information, the details. And as a health educator and now PE person, you, you do look big picture because we have such a wonderful program here in the wellness piece, addressing anxiety issues and depression, which also I can't, I just say thank you for that. Because, you know, we have testimonials from students. So that plays also a huge role in our athletics, after-school activities. It's, thank you. I appreciate all of that and all that you're doing. I have seen a tremendous difference.
Well, I appreciate it because what you do is you're teaching skills, deal with stress. And it's this, this more of a collaborative, integrative process.
The mindfulness piece.
All, all that, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I was gonna say about ourselves, so we really appreciate this presentation.
I appreciate it, Tim, thank you. And I'd like to kind of echo what Sue just said. Tim does a phenomenal job. His relationship with kids is, is amazing. Kids really, really trust him. And that is the key component to making any kind of progress. The fact that kids trust him allow him to really have some difficult conversations and make a lot of progress.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to section five, 5.1, Principal's Report.
Sure. And actually, 5 point, I'm gonna address 5.1 and 5.4 because in the Principal's Report is a section on NEASC. We'll take care of both. So I'm just gonna touch on a couple of things. The first one is the piece about the admin team news. We certainly were fortunate to get somebody as qualified as Peter Coffey to come in and serve as the long-term sub for the remainder of the year in Kevin Reel's absence. But we had to look at what was gonna happen next and Dan Shepherdson made it clear that he would be interested in this role. He's been here a long time as a great administrator and a coach. And I, it's my feeling that he's going to do a great job in that role. And so I've reassigned him beginning next year to fill that role, which then means that we will have an opening for a house director and we'll be posting that position soon. Okay. The next one, I don't know if Lucy was planning to cover this, so if I'm stealing your thunder, I apologize, but Penguin Plunge, CBU once again. Woo-hoo, top fundraiser. Yep. And one of the top fundraisers nationally. 135 students and staff members and $38,000 raised. And we will be recognized on Friday.
Did you jump in, Lucy?
In the trike race.
I did not get to the race that year, no. Maybe next year.
That's what I always say too.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It was cold. Oh my God, it was cold. Okay.
The water people.
So I, I would like to move to the Penguin Plunge, I'm sorry, to the NEASC rather. In conversations with Elaine, I've been having conversations with her for quite a while now about this particular topic. I don't have to spend too much time talking about how much is on the plate of our faculty members in the next couple of years, particularly with the state mandates around PLPs proficiency-based graduation. We've put together a plan, I'm part of a district team, where the district's putting together a three-year plan. And right in the middle of that three-year plan is our NEASC visit. Next spring, the self-study is due. Last time we did a self-study, it took all of our in-service time to prepare it. It's eight standards and each standard requires an eight to 12-page essay, all kinds of student essays.
So I understand that it changed in 2011.
Some of it did change.
A lot of it, it's supposed to be significantly less in terms of that.
Right. And that's, yes. And so the, one of the things we've done is I have been having conversations with NEASC about what that looks like. And continuing to have conversations with them. And at any rate, so what I did was a cost and benefit analysis basically of this. And that's pretty much what I've included here under the premise that we'd like to form a subcommittee of board members to discuss this with me, to look at the options, to do what Leah just mentioned, to look at what is actually now the expectations. And also, not just in terms of the amount of effort required, but also the expense itself. For instance, it's $3,800 to be a member this year and the visit is anticipated to cost about $20,000. And it's a three-day visit. And we really want to look at what we've gotten out of that relationship for that kind of investment. And the other piece is the supports and accountability measures that are in place now that were not in place 10 years ago, the last time we had a visit, you know, with, with No Child Left Behind and the state AYP and all the things that have been put in place, our membership and League of Innovative Schools. We have a lot of those things in place that were not in place before. So if you're at all interested, if, you know, you could read through this, I think at the end, we're gonna ask for volunteers.
Right. Under Action Matters, we'll be asking for volunteers to serve on that committee and work with Jeff on exploring some of the things that he's talked about today in more depth and come back with a recommendation to the board on how to proceed with our involvement with NEASC.
Yep, precisely.
I'm just not quite clear, based on the way this is written, whether you're saying, so have no accreditation or have a different accreditation? What are you talking about?
Well, that's another thing, we could talk about the possibilities. But the schools that I've spoken to several who have discontinued their relationship with them have done a lot of studies and I've got a lot of the data from colleges and universities that have said that NEASC accreditation is not a factor in their determining admission. So that is a part of it. So what we, one of the things that we would lose is NEASC accreditation. And we could also look at the number of schools who have made the, made a similar decision in the last few years. There certainly is a, a reduction in the number of schools who are participating for a lot of the same reasons that I just shared.
So this should be a really interesting committee to be a part of. Think about it.
Yep.
Thanks, Jeff.
Sure.
Okay, CSSU debrief?
We had a, actually turned out to be a pretty interesting discussion on the insurance that we cover for, for the CSSU. If you wanna, it's, it's, all the stuff for CSSU board is the same place as our CBU board material if you want to look at it. But Mike Boardman came and I always think it's gonna be five minutes of yawn and it turns out to, I'm cutting people off because people have interesting questions about insurance, so. We did that. And we recognized some retiring school board members, including Susan and Russ McCaffrey and Deb Baker-Moody. We briefly touched on key legislative issues. It seems like we're sort of right at that turning point now where things are starting to heat up. And we were a little behind, so we didn't dwell on them too much, but that's, you should really start paying attention to the VSBA newsletters that you get because I think shortly, things are gonna be getting really interesting. The CSSU board has a committee, sort of committee in waiting to sort of react to these things very quickly so we can have some feedback on them. But, you know, anybody who's got an opinion is welcome to chime in on them. I mean, as, as the CSSU board, you can of course chime in with your own legislative reps. We did vote, this was something that's been kicking around for several months now. If you remember, the par, special ed para educators are at the local schools. We did vote today, the starting next year, they'll be at the CSSU. That was sort of the last piece of special ed that was not at DSU. And I think that was it. And then we went into our common topic on early, early education, which if you missed it was, was very good, it was very interesting. So doing an awful lot way before they get to CBU, but hopefully having an impact with it. That was it. Somebody else was there, had something to throw in?
Yeah, that was amazing. We often hear Megan talking about all of the special ed work that's done, you know, here. And then to hear her talk about this whole other area of work that she's involved in, it was really interesting. Go back and look at that. Okay, moving on then to 5.3, Second Quarter Financial Management Report.
Anyone else?
Who wants to do that?
No Bob, yeah.
On vacation, I think. We are slightly in a worse position due to some changes in special ed. Make sure I got the right notes here.
So what I read, just wanted to jump in, is that after adjusting for the $154,000 cash carryover, we, we were at the end of the first quarter, six, around $64,000 favorable. And now that's down to 30, about $37,000. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that's due to mostly to?
The puts and takes on special ed is probably the biggest. We had some tuition changes. But it was primarily special ed. The, it left us in, if you, if you remember when we were making the decision on how much to apply to taxes this year, it really, we're 20, 20K difference, it's not a big difference. We're still in very good position, so no concerns on the budget. We also went through the, with Kurt, the, we had a combined facilities and finance committee meeting because we've gotten to the point where most of the facilities discussions are about how we're gonna finance the facilities.
Yeah.
They cut those backwards. How, how they're gonna be financed. So we went through with Kurt. There was a sheet in our, that we reviewed early in the budget cycle on all the facilities needs. He kind of cleaned that up, put things in different areas. We should probably get everyone a new copy for everyone now because. We should probably get everyone a new copy for everyone else, because they're in a better position.
Yeah, it was, it was in the packet, yeah.
Yeah, I just print them out individually, so.
Unless there's something different.
Yeah. But that's in there. I think we're in, we're in good shape on that. We have, in the capital funds, we have almost two-hundred-thousand dollars set aside, which does not include the money that has been earmarked for fields.
Okay.
So that will take care of the things we had planned, you know, for the ongoing years. And actually, the big news, or the interesting one, was on food service, which is that for a second year in a row, we're going to be in a deficit.
And that's different from what we were thinking at the end of the first quarter?
We thought maybe that he could hold it together. Yeah, but it was only, end of the first quarter was only one month of school.
Right.
So this is, Jeff can probably explain it better than us, but essentially, this has a lot to do with the new regulations, federal regulations that are in place. And at this point, we're kind of feeling this is the new position that's going to be for food service, is that, is that we're going to be having to begin to plan to fund it out of our budget at this point, like the K8s do, frankly. So-
But is there a major change, other than the, the regulations? Because this was a huge moneymaker, and we were taking money-
Mm-hmm.
...from him to, to do, so it seems like it's a huge swing for only different regulations.
To be honest, there's not much else that can explain it, to, to our understanding, based on the conversations we've had. Jonathan, you're in.
Yeah, it's a combination of factors, but I think it's primarily related to the way I understood it, was to, he was able to, Leo was able to sell healthy, relatively healthy snacks that he can't sell now-
Oh.
...under the new regulations. And that provided us a source of revenue that, that helped significantly. And, and then they're also sourcing more local, organic-
Yeah.
...and, and those items tend to be more expensive.
And he's looked into other snacks?
So his revenue's gone down because he can't sell the things? They, they literally looked at things he was doing and saying, now you can't do that anymore. It doesn't fit. So then revenues go down, and, and then costs go up on the other organic and local sourced.
But that explains it much more clearly than just regulations have made him buy differently. You're, you're losing a revenue source that, you know, the-
Yeah. The students are, are consumers, and they come in, and they can choose to spend their money or not. And they were choosing to spend their money, and they're choosing to spend less of it now.
And I assume he's, he's looked into alternative snacks?
He's working at it, yeah. He's trying, and it's, he's got a challenge.
Yeah.
Are more students bringing lunch, or are they foregoing lunch, because they don't want to purchase what we serve?
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to-
Not sure.
...ask his perspective on that, I'm not sure, to be honest.
And remember, our seniors can go elsewhere for lunch.
The seniors can.
Bring in for everybody else.
But so far, nobody's bootlegging the food, selling in the four corners, so. But Leo has agreed to come and speak to our committee, because we've broached the subject of what happens if you go along without being part of the, the process.
So we could choose to no longer accept the federal-
Right.
...subsidies and trust Leo and his staff and people who advise him to feed our children well. He would have to make up the, I forget, the hundred and-
That's a hundred and thirty.
Hundred and fifty, hundred and thirty? Thousand dollars. But we've lost about fifty already. But the, well, we actually, you know, we haven't talked to Leo, he's going to come back, but we made really important to Bob was that we don't, this board is never going to support doing something that's not healthy for kids.
Right.
But if it can be differently healthy and, and actually get the kids, I mean, I would frankly rather have the kids eating here in the cafeteria healthy foods than going down to, with places that shall be not be named-
Some of them.
...that, that may not be as healthy, because they've got a choice. So they can go and they can have pizza or sandwiches and fries and things like that. You know, why wouldn't we want to try to feed them healthy here? But I did, we did make it very clear, there's no way that this board is going to say, well, for the sake of thirty thousand dollars, we want you to put crap back in the cafeteria, right? So, so that was very clear. But, you know, it's something to open the door and just kind of think outside the box and say, you know, can we provide healthy food in the cafeteria enough to make up the loss of the federal fund?
Jeff, if we were not receiving federal subsidy or, you know, would our kids qualify for a free and reduced lunch?
I don't know.
No, probably not.
I think that-
Yeah, it's-
...that would be-
Absolutely a key consideration.
More than dollars. I mean, it's-
Yeah, I gotta be honest, the idea is-
I don't know.
...very much in its infancy, and Leo just wants the opportunity to come in and throw ideas at us, I think.
Well, that's what, that's what the hundred and thirty is, federal reimbursements for lunch versus for breakfast. So that's, it's, it's, on Leo's budget, it's worth a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So we would, they would, they would still qualify, but instead of the federal government paying for their lunch, Leo would have to generate enough money to pay for their lunch.
Okay.
So that's what would be the money. So it's, it's an interesting conversation. It's, according to Bob, we're not the only ones having this problem. There's all sorts of schools nationwide who are struggling with this, and so it could be that before we even get to a decision-making point, some regulations are changed, but that's where we are, that's where we are on that. So interesting discussion.
Thanks, Jean.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to five point five. Lucy?
Okay, um, so we already kind of touched upon Penguin Plunge, how that was a huge success. I did not drink water, but I know lots of people who did and who just loved that experience. In school, we are coming up on February break, and this week was Spirit Week, and it's still going on, so we have different fun activities every day, and you dress up every day, like yesterday was Sweatpants Monday, which was very nice to start the week off. And it ends with the Winter Carnival, which is like the winter celebration and competition between all of the classes and all the faculty. So everyone performs dances, and they do the famous trike race, and it's just a nice way to kick off break and kind of celebrate the end of quite a long year so far. What else? I know that grad challenge deadlines are coming up for those seniors, and lots of juniors have started thinking about their grad challenge opportunities. And sports, winter sports are coming to a close. I know that basketball has playoffs starting, and, yeah, I think everyone's excited for a little break to kind of get rejuvenated.
Great, thank you. Okay, five point six, Committee is-
Nice enthusiastic reporting.
Actually, we all just, about the Communications Committee, as you all know, we just finished an article on the budget that's going out in papers this week. And we're still planning an article for March, so that's where the Communications Committee is. Any other committees, facilities? I guess you already-
Do you want to talk about our committee, since Polly's not here?
We met. As I recall, it was a while ago, I don't remember the date.
Is this co-curricular or?
Co-curricular committee.
Mm-hmm.
I don't recall us deciding when to meet again. And to be honest, I thought it was very enlightening, but very confusing in the same-
There's a lot of, there's a lot of data, so we were just trying to get our heads around. Jean and I were not involved, so Polly was trying to explain all the data to us, so.
And I wasn't. I don't recall. To be honest, it was a while ago, and I wasn't prepared to discuss it, so I'm not, I'm blanking.
Well, see, from now on, you'll be prepared.
I will be.
No, I think it really was a lot of us trying to understand some of the data, and we did have a discussion around, you know, with Pete being here and not Kevin, that we probably have to think about our requests for information, but one thing that was, that we talked about around this concept of should the school fully fund sports, as opposed to all the fundraising or outside fundraising, some of the data was, it was kind of unclear in some of the data about how much of the fundraising was for spirit gear versus necessary equipment, you know? So, so that might be another kind of a slice of, unfortunately, more data we just need, even if it's anecdotal and no receipts, but you know, some, some feeling to say, well, if the school chose to fully fund the necessary stuff, how much would that be? So, so I think we're just kind of getting our head around what the questions are.
Great, great, thank you. Okay, moving right on to six point one, Budget Informational Meeting Preparation. So I guess I just want to start off by thanking Jean and Lorna for doing so much work on putting together our budget flyer. Susan Holson also volunteered her time to put that together, and she did a great job with all the formatting, and, and you've seen a copy of it in the packet, so, so thank you. That budget flyer apparently will be distributed-
This week.
...either this week or next week, I believe, in local papers, so keep your eye out for it. Jean, did you, are you planning on putting together a survey for this year?
Oh, jeez, completely forgot. What does anybody think? I mean, we kind of go back and forth. What I remember is that Jean had a brilliant idea for the flyer, and I completely forgot what it was, what I sat down to.
The flyer or the-
I mean, for the questionnaire, it was something, and I'm scratching my head on what it was, and if I come up with, came up with a great idea, I would, I, I haven't even thought about it.
Maybe we can talk about that, we usually want to do. Okay. So our Budget Informational Meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 2nd, at 5:00 PM. And that's an opportunity for voters in the district to come and find out more about our school budget and the bond article. And that's a pretty short meeting, and I know, at Shelburne, we then go on to our, a town meeting that evening, so. I don't know, Elaine, is there anything else we need to discuss around preparing for this meeting?
Sorry about that. I don't think so.
We can have a little slideshow like we've had before for the-
Yeah, I, I saw it right before Bob went on, I should probably take one more look at it, but it's pretty bare bones, but it's what we usually have.
And he's going to work on that next week. He is back next week. He told me that that's, it'll be quiet, because everybody else will be on vacation, and he'll, he's going to work on all of those.
Do we present that slideshow at this meeting, at the Budget Informational Meeting that's here?
It depends, if you have an audience. If you have an audience, then yes, you would, but there have been many years when you have not had an audience, so.
In my quarter, two people, I think, with two people left here.
Right.
Or consolidated presentation.
So you play it by year, depending on who's here.
From my age, you could walk through this flyer at that meeting and-
That might even be more helpful.
That might be more helpful.
Address all the questions or-
Q and A.
Just with that in your hand, you'd be fine. You won't, you need a PowerPoint.
We'll warn everybody that the numbers in the flyer are very slightly different than the numbers on the PowerPoint, because apparently Mike found some more revenue and adjusted the number, so the numbers came out, the math came out a little bit different. I don't, it's not, it's, it's in the rounding, but it's, you know, point, one-point-eight instead of one-point-nine or something, and it's not an error, it's, it was something that got changed, so that we were working on the flyer in parallel with Mike correcting the numbers, and it didn't get picked up, so.
Good to know. Okay, any other comments?
Better to the good than the bad.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right then. Item seven, Action Matters. Could I have a motion to reaffirm, reaffirm our retreat date of Monday, June 1st? Make the motion.
Second.
A second? All those in favor? Well, is there any discussion about it? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, could I have a motion to approve an increase of point oh-nine FTE to cover advisory for the remainder of 2014-2015 school year?
To move.
Second.
Okay, do you want to explain?
This is Kevin Reel advisory, and so we had, we had a gentleman who was not first time, and we assigned this to, and point nine reflects the amount of time that he's actually serving as advisor.
Okay, any questions? All right then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven point two point two, could I have a motion to approve a leave-of-absence request for 2015-2016?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and item seven point three, so this is to appoint the review committee, the NIESK Review Committee. Is there anybody interested in serving on the committee that Jeff described earlier this evening?
Do you know anything about how you're going to time it and the parameters for it?
Not really, I can, it can be pretty, pretty dependent upon when people are home.
Right, if we, do you think it's, if we went the way you're thinking, would it be more than one meeting, or, or we just don't know?
My sense would be, I share what I know so far, gather other things you'd like us to learn, if you think it's necessary, and then give me a chance to do that, and then so, I would think two meetings at the most would be my sense.
Do you have a feel for when you'd need to make that decision? Would you be doing more this summer, or?
Certainly before the summer, because if, if indeed we're doing it, I think we may want to put some time aside in the summer to work on.
So we're looking at about three people?
Yep.
Longer's done by June.
Yes, yes, it'll be done by June.
Okay, so Marilyn, Leah?
I don't know how many you want, and I actually, Ray had a say in the-
Yeah, I have Ray, too.
I've got three.
I think, just, just while we're talking about it, this is something, if we choose to step away from being accredited, we may want to make sure the community has some-
Yep.
...ability to weigh in on that, because that could drive some people crazy.
No, it's interesting, because we just, we just decided that the Charlotte Children's Center, I'm on the board, it's just a little entity, but there was a lot of family concern about using, or not going for our national accreditation. We did, we have, you know, five stars early childhood, but it was quite interesting, I was surprised there was, you know, how many, we have forty families, and it was very interesting.
Might be interesting to have a community member on the board, just-
Oh, on the committee.
I don't know, if we can think of somebody.
Yeah.
Good.
If people have suggestions, and you want to email that to me, I can, I can look into that, absolutely.
Okay, if you guys think of anybody, why don't you email me?
Yeah, that's a better idea.
If you can coordinate that. That's a good idea, though. Okay, moving on to seven point four, could I have a motion to approve the timeline process for the principal search?
Second.
Ray, Jean, thank you. So I think Elaine's going to walk us through-
Yes.
...that process. I have a handout.
Proposal. 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 We've already posted the position on School Spring. We reviewed what we had posted two years ago, changed it a teeny bit, but not a lot. And am hoping to appoint a committee by this Friday. So I sent a note out to the faculty and staff earlier today, and have already heard back from them. And also know, I have a whole list of people who would be interested in serving, so I'm, I'm pretty sure that by Friday, I will be able to say, here are the three faculty members, the one administrator, the one staff member, and the one student. So if tonight, you could agree on who the three faculty members are, then by Friday, we could have that. March 3rd and 5th would be the committee meeting, so the first of those meetings is to review the process and timeline, to go over what you can and can't ask in an interview, to really underscore the whole issue of confidentiality, and to get people assigned to School Spring so that they can review candidates. March 5th, the second meeting, is to actually review the candidates, so by, before March 5th, the position has closed. The way we close positions is we say, we get, we don't, we don't actually close it, we just say we give preference to candidates whose applications are in by that date. So March 5th would be a review of those candidates to determine who it is we want to interview. March 9th would be the first round of interviews, and depending on how many candidates we wanted to interview, it could be that we'll need to schedule another date, but- But certainly March 9th. I would do reference checks after that. March 13th would be second round interviews. March 16th, if the committee deemed it appropriate or necessary, we would do site visits and have a committee meeting on that date. So if we do do site visits, I would also be scheduling a committee meeting to give a recommendation to me, because by law, then I come and give a recommendation to you. You have the ultimate power to say yes or no to that recommendation. And then by law, I, if you said no, I would come back with another candidate. Brian O'Regan is not available to do the search. He has, he is retiring to Virginia. So that's where he is now. And he comes back every now and then, but can't be back long enough to do a search. Lauren Wooden did the search for Williston. She is the executive director of the Champlain Valley Education Development Council. She did a great job. The person that I'm thinking about calling for this one is Mike Dewis, who is former superintendent in Essex. He is very organized, very smart, knows the education field really well. And that's who I would propose that we hire to do the search. Questions? Thoughts?
What timeframes would these be? Are these days very condensed?
So, right, on the 3rd and 5th, it would, the, the meeting on the 3rd is probably about an hour to an hour and a half outside limit. Probably an hour is more it.
But dur, during the day?
Three thirty to five. March 5th, two hours, probably three thirty to five thirty. That takes longer because we're actually selecting candidates and then we're reviewing the input that we've received and developing questions to make sure that we're addressing the, the questions that we want to ask these candidates and the information we want to get. March 9th would be, I would imagine, a full day. March 13th depends, probably half day. I don't think that you'd bring more than two candidates forward, though it's possible, but it's unlikely. And then March 16th is a subset of the committee. If we do a site visit, we don't send the whole committee. We send two or three people. Or maybe four, up to four people. I have als, I've already heard from some of you. I've heard from Joan, Polly, and Lorna. I know for Joan, there's a date that doesn't work, but it's one of the committee meetings. And so I could be a little more flexible about the committee meetings. No flexibility at all around the interviews. Heard back from Lorna that March 13th doesn't work for her. I could also do March 12th. I need to make sure that that works with, you know, the other search that's going on. So I've got color-coded sheets here to keep myself straight about which, you know, which hiring process we're involved in here. But it's possible that I could do that.
Because I could do the committee too.
You could.
And I think those are all days I can do, but I would have to double check.
Okay.
So maybe first we should just pass, vote on the motion on the floor and then we can talk about appointing members to the committee. So is there any other discussion about the timeline?
March 3rd is town meeting day?
No, the day after. Isn't it?
March 3rd is town meeting day.
Oh, it is town meeting day. It's town meeting day. Does that?
March 3rd is the vote.
Right, town meeting day. Is that a problem for anybody, though?
No, I just want to make sure that, you knew that.
Oh, no. That just means that I'll be right here at CBU for the next, next little meeting.
Okay, then. So all those in favor of approving the timeline process for the principal search, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and so seven point five, appointing members to the search committee. So we have how many?
Three. That's how many you had last time.
Well, we've got.
Kim was a four.
Kim.
Well, right now, you have four, four people who have volunteered.
Okay, is there anybody else who's interested? Okay, so we have Kim, Joan, Polly, and Lorna who are interested. So do I just appoint? Is that, or do we?
Well, there was a conflict with one date.
For Lorna. It could be that you've got three. Three is how many I'm recommending anyway. I mean, if you had, if you really insisted on four, I would say that's fine.
Okay, so why don't we move forward with Kim, Polly, and Joan? And I'll talk to Lorna and see, since she's going to miss a, a date.
She's communicating with me about that already, so I don't mind being the one to communicate with her. And like I said, if I can switch it to the 12th and it can work for everybody, then I'm willing to do that. I just can't promise that without checking some other things.
Well, and, and why don't you and I be in touch? And we'll see Lorna's schedule and
Your schedule.
my schedule. And then if that's acceptable, one or the other of us. I'm good on, on most, I think. And I just have to juggle, but, but.
Right. So I just want to say again, so make sure that it's really clear that I'm very flexible about the committee, because I can make that time up. Individually, I'm not flexible about the interview dates. Because I really think one of the key things about an interview process for it to have integrity is that the people who are sitting around the table are always the same people sitting around the table. And they're hearing every little bit of discussion and they're seeing every nuance of what's going on. And that's sometimes very, very important at the end of the process. You know, if you've got a tough decision to make, it can't be that somebody who wasn't in one of the interviews is now saying, oh, yeah, but I didn't see that. Well, so, okay.
Okay.
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, great. So consent agenda, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. Confirming next meeting dates. So our budget annual meeting is March 2nd at 5:00 PM. So that's an early meeting here. March 4th, we have a CBU agenda review meeting. March 17th is our next regular meeting. And that's when we will do the board reorganization.
Who's going to do the agenda meeting? You're going to volunteer as a community member?
So do we know who the next chair might be?
Polly has expressed interest in, she's the only one who's really.
So maybe Polly could come with you?
And I've invited her to come.
Okay, perfect. I think that makes sense.
Do the two of us and I'll transition all the files and do all that at that time. Assuming that's how it will move forward, so. And then also a reminder that the April board meeting is scheduled for April 14th, which is the second Tuesday and not the third Tuesday. And that's to avoid a conflict with spring break. So be aware of that.
And also a reminder that the March 17th meeting starts at 5:00.
Yep.
At this point, at least, at least at this point. It might start later if the agenda's short.
Exactly, I was just going to say there, when we have the agenda review meeting, that will determine whether you need to start at 5:00 or 5:30, depending on what's on the agenda. So it does happen that people start later.
So pay attention to that time. And I guess now we'll move into executive session. Could I have a motion to move into executive session? Second? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay.